We'll call our meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Our first item is our minutes from our regular board meeting in March. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Our next item, a confirmation approval of our claims.
Our claims this month, we have a total of $807,794.87, which is pretty much in line with the past years. Our Fund One total is $222,215.39 this month. That's compared to last year at the same time, $183,329.22, for a difference of about $38,000 more paid this year. A few things that we purchased this, that we have made this year. Some maintenance equipment, like for 8,500. We have an increase in usage in the month of February compared to last year concerning utilities. Was a slight increase there. I think the price of electricity has gone up some and also the amount that we use was up to $9,885. And then the biggest thing was a reimbursement to Kentucky State Treasurer. Just so you understand, this was a $16,000 expenditure. However, what that amounts to is that we pay it and then we're reimbursed by the government for that particular amount concerning the federal health cost. So that's kind of a wash. It's in and then back out. So it did not cost us that, but it does show up on books. Now these, in the past, we did not include that in our minutes reports. We're doing that now. This is another one of those things for transparency and we're making sure that that is included. But again, it's an in and out kind of thing, so nothing to be concerned about. You'll also see some expenses in your claims report for the occupational and speech therapists that will look like a bit of an increase this month compared to their normal. Keep in mind that they are contracted and they're only going to be paid X amount of dollars. Due to some snow days, they worked, we don't want to say extra days, but they worked those days that they missed during snow. So this pay period is going to show a few more days for them, which will increase their income for this month because it was decreased the month before. If that makes sense to you. All right. Be glad to entertain any questions you might have concerning the claims. If there's anything you would like to ask me about.
I think my saw was a Polaris Ranger. How would that be used a lot?
The Polaris Ranger is a piece of equipment that they're using on campus for to move from point A to point B, bring tools, use things, particularly in the sports facilities, things of that nature. There are a number of ways that we've seen it used. For example, they were going across campus, they had the ladder on it. It just saves the use of a pickup truck or whatnot.
Did the dog park that?
We still have them. They are, they do not maintain the power as the Polaris will. Battery operated and so we still use those. We do have a total of six maintenance minutes. So we have, we're using those vehicles more and more as opposed to larger vehicles, trucks and so forth.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed. Our next item is our financial report.
Let's Dr. Hagan come forward at this time.
What I have, it isn't as much fun as we're going to have here. Let me make a couple of comments on the cover sheet there. It looks like at the end of the year, we will have about a balance of somewhere around a million two fifty, which is about what we started with. Might be a little bit more than that, but it should be at least that. By end of this week, we should have only about $20,000 left in collect property tax. And another thing, we'll note to you that you notice childcare there. They started out with about $25,000. It looks like they're going to make a little profit this year. As you remember, we always want to break even or make a little bit on that. But that does a great job. That looks like that'll be above board this time. Let me update you on textbooks. We're going to finish out reading in the elementary school at about $25,000. Primary is in good shape and middle school is in good shape. The high school will spend about $15,000 for some advanced placement statistics. Not just statistics book, but advanced placement books. We'll get quite a bit of that back through that Kentucky, Advanced Kentucky Grant. I think they're going to add this stat class. It'll be the 12 AP class I think they're going to add, which is quite a number for a high school as small as it is. Let's see, in technology, it looks like we'll be able to replace the servers and do everything we need to do in the middle school by not adding any general fund money. What we'll do is match next year's money next year rather than escrow. And that way, we should be able to get everything done that needs to be done without using the general fund money. And then if we get the Wi-Fi money this coming year, we'll probably have to add some general fund money to it. But we don't know the status of that yet. I want to update you on the playground in the elementary school. Paul Bowlen will probably be here next month with, he's done quite a bit of research. Got a committee together. They looked at various plans and equipment. And he'll be here to talk to you about that. And then you may remember, we had a cut in sync, about $20,000 that then we stored. So we'll get that. And state budget money is up about 3%. So next year should be, you'll probably know it's a tough year, but it'll be a year we'll be able to get through. And last note, next month, we'll have a tentative budget for you if that will help. Cycle for ten hours. And that's it for the financial portion.
Question for Dr. Hagan? Thank you, sir.
Is he retiring at 30 this morning?
We'll take the last one.
Right now, we're ready for our superintendent's report. Looks like we're going to have a good one.
We have a great show for you today. These students that are here, we're representing three groups and you can hear some hardware jingling and jangling. We see hardware out in the front on the floor. It's going to be a great day to recognize some wonderful students. But before we do that, I'd like to take just a second. I'd like to recognize these coaches, sponsors of these groups. We want to say thank you. There are many long hours that these folks put in. They do their teaching job as teachers and then there's practices, there's organizing competitions. There's even involve in sometimes getting on buses and taking trips and not back till late. And so, coaches, we thank you for your work, what you do as you go way beyond the classroom work. And it's clear that you are reaping the results of your hard work with the students that we're going to see today. So with that being said, we're going to begin with, first with the elementary school. We're going to have the academic team, Coach Denise Hicks come up. And she's going to tell us a little bit about their successes this year.
Okay. I would like to talk about some of the categories that we have for academic team. There are several categories. The first category is quick recall. And if y'all all stand up please. As you can see, I use all my students for the quick recall. And what's kind of interesting is they're all very good players. So if the first string does really well and we're really ahead, I'll pull them out and put the next string in. So we try to play as many players as we can. You all may sit down. The next credit category is FES, future problem solving. If y'all would stand up. I'll turn it over as well, please. Okay. All right. That's a little bit more intense. It's a future problem solving where they create a scenario for the future. They have to read a plan and do six steps, which entails a lot. They came in first. I do want to brag a little bit. They came in first in district. And out of 10 teams, regionals, they came in first. So they did very well. Usually it's only eight at regions and they came in first. So you all may sit down. Thank you. In written assessments, there are several categories here. Again, written composition at district. At district, if you all would stand up, those who placed. Okay. That's Olivia. You may sit down. In math, at district, if you all would stand up please. They all placed at district. Language arts, if you would stand up. They placed at district. Social studies. Okay. Arts and humanities. Social, uh, science. And that's it for that part. We usually practice about two times a week for quick recall and about two times a week for future problem solving. But it takes more than that. They go home and they do their job too by practicing with flashcards, getting on internet. Ms. Sarah Floyd worked with me this year and she did, she's not a coach, but she did far beyond more than I could have ever expected. So she really worked with the students as well. So I really appreciate that. And regions, if I can, we also came in first place there. As I called, quick recall, we came in third. And again, that's all my students. FES, we came in first, I've already said. If you place, I want you to stand as I call these out. Math. Language arts. Okay. Written composition. Arts and humanities. Science. Which led us to come in place of first place of regions. So I'm very proud of them. Thank you for giving us the opportunity this year.
Next group of students that we're going to be recognizing come from the middle school. Larry and Karen Wilson are the guide team here, are, is the coaches of this, of this team. We have 16 of those folks, I think, with us today. And as we said, there's a lot of time, a lot of hard work put into these programs. And in fact, this is the first year that the Wilsons have coaches team, I understand. And they were selected as the regional coach of the year. So let's congratulate them. You will tell us about your success.
I'm Karen Wilson and I actually teach sixth grade science over at the middle school. Larry Wilson is one of our assistant coaches. Michelle Puckett, who is not able to be with us today, is another coach that we have. And we have Ms. Amberly Penley here today and she's actually joining our coaching staff for next year. The speech and drama is a program that allows our middle school students to become radio broadcasters, young actors, speakers and poets. Students develop a variety of skills from 12 categories that allow them to gain confidence to become effective speakers today and in their future. To be able to attend the state pistol tournament UK, students have to pre-qualify at various competitions by scoring amongst the top six competitors. And when we say top six, we are normally in a regular competition going against about 50 competitors trying to get in the top six. We attended competitions at Harrison County, Western Kentucky University, Ockerman, Leroux and Danville. At all competitions, we did final in various categories and we placed as a top six as a school in each competition. Regionals were held in February where we had 34 of 36 possible entries for our school. Every single student, 32 total, that participated in regionals earned a qualifying score to earn a spot for the state tournament. And unfortunately, we had to pick and choose on who we brought with us today. We wanted to bring all 32, but we didn't have room. At Louisville Regionals, we took first place, which was the first time for school history. Also, which was already noted, Larry and I were also named coaches of the year at the Louisville Region. Our individual region winners, and please stand up. Extemporaneous speaking, only after a tiebreaker, was Lakin Festervan. She took regional runner-up. In impromptu speaking, our regional runner-up was Ashley Zizzo. Our regional champion was Rebecca Walsh. In humorous and dramatic interpretation, our regional champion, Samuel Levens. In improvisational duo, there was a tie for first place and the tie was from our school. The tie was between Joey Clark and Carly Hall with Linda Chin and Jack Downs. And our regional runner-up was Jack Downs and Linda Chin. And our regional champions were Joey Clark and Carly Hall. In original oratory at regions, our regional runner-up, Rebecca Walsh. In declamation, our regional champion, Olivia Shams. In pros, our regional runner-up, Hannah Waldrich. And in poetry, our regional champion, Jack Downs. At the state tournament, the first day began with three rounds known as the elimination rounds. After these rounds, semifinalists were determined. We had at least one student semifinal in eight of our 12 categories, with three of those categories actually having two semifinalists. The second day, we advanced to finals in only three of our eight categories. We competed against 37 schools from across the state finishing in 10th place. Our semifinalist for state, in broadcasting, Brooklyn Wilson. In pros, Summer Smith. In poetry, Jack Downs and Mackenzie Bivens. In declamation, and she's unable to be here today, Sabrina Johnson. In duo acting, Joey Clark and Gabby Abel. Callie Arnold and Carly Hall. Kenley Cahill and Zoe Kelty. Improvisational duos, Jack Downs and Linda Chin. Joey Clark and Carly Hall. Impromptu speaking, Ashley Zizzo. And original oratory, Rebecca Walsh. Then when they cut and did the finals for the state, in poetry, Jack Downs took fourth place in the state of Kentucky. In original oratory, Rebecca Walsh did fifth place for the state of Kentucky. And in improvisational duos, Jack Downs and Linda Chin took sixth place for the state of Kentucky. So we had a very, very busy season. And one thing that Ms. Hicks commented on, long hours. We scheduled practice primarily on Wednesday, but when you're dealing with children who are in other activities, you end up practicing some on Monday, some on Tuesday, some on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, even on Sundays. So we stayed very, very, very busy for the season and you can see all their bling in here at all. And they did an amazing job. Thank you.
And now we have Mr. Aaron Hunt with our TSA program at the high school. And the advanced state competition have returned and he has some awards that he wants to share with us.
Thank you. Welcome to the post call. I am Aaron Hunt. I'm the engineering technology teacher for the high school and middle school here. I'm also the TSA sponsor, Stanford Kentucky, or Technology Student Association. In March, we were able to compete at the Kentucky TSA State Conference. And I have some, some young individuals that did very, very well. They were able to compete in both individual and team events that are all centered around engineering and technology. Very extended and focused. It incorporates both academic and technical skills. Individual events, we had Lucas Downs placing third in dragster design. And Catherine Nally, first place in photographic technology. And then for two team events, we have Austin Morse, who's not with us today. Connor Livez, Noah McCollie, Devin Brady and Ethan Spaulding. They placed second place for an engineering design. And that is a really unique event because they give them a different prompt every year. Generally, where they have to design something that can be manufactured, something that can be produced. And their prompt was a form of assistive technology. And they were rather ambitious and decided to design a prosthetic limb from the knee down. So very, very proud of those young men. And then for our team event, we had a first place in structural design engineering with Ethan Spaulding and Blake Newton. I'd say these, these young men and women are a joy to work with. Very pleased to be working with them. And I thank you for the time to have them recognized and speak in front of you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Board members, do you have any questions for anyone in the group? Any sponsors, coaches, anything we would like to ask them or say to them?
Were you guys nervous? No.
Well, listen, we want to say thank you so much for representing yourself, but also representing our school system as well as you have. You really made a huge impression on us today and I'm sure you did on the folks when you were in your competition. So we just ask one thing, keep up the great work, okay? And you all are excused now to go back to class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, I did have spring 52, but the high school had very beautiful times. I'd like to get there, but the history of the ride was kind of, could come on somebody's part, wasn't it?
You all may recall, not too long ago, to continue our superintendent's report, we did talk about refinancing some bonds. And so we have with us today, Mr. Joe Nance. He's going to come and tell us a little bit about that process, where we are and what's getting ready to happen next.
Thank you, Mr. Post Call. Pleasure to be here this afternoon. My main reason is to be here is I want to grab your superintendent and chairman. After the meeting, we're going to sign a stack of closing documents. So since I am here, Brent, I thought it'd be a good idea for me to give you an update. Of course, you all approved back at your February board meeting, the refinancing of our 2010 and 2006 series bonds. Based on that approval, we were able to issue the refund, refunding bonds in March. And we're getting ready to close the issue. So just a summary of what we were able to achieve. If you recall, at your February meeting, we projected what I would consider minimum savings. And if we could not get the minimum savings, we simply wouldn't do the refinancing. At that point, our total minimum savings projected was $132,404. Once we actually sold the bonds, completed the refinancing, our net savings are actually $242,136. So we saved over $100,000 more than the minimal projection. So obviously, we went through with the refinancing, we're ready to close and just wanted to report to the board that the timing was good. We were able to pull off the refinancing, even save more than we originally projected. So it's just good news to report.
Great news.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You will notice in your drop box and also at your place there and paper forms as well, you have a document with end of year activities. That's pretty close to being complete, but we'll keep updating that and keep passing that along to you. Just wanted you to be sure that you're aware of the end of year type of activities. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is a discussion of the certified evaluation plan.
Mr. Downs will be telling you a lot about this today. It's going to take us a little bit of time. This is a, this is a major change in the certified evaluation plan, CEP, that we've had in the past. It's something that we've been working with probably 25 years and we've changed it a little bit. This is a complete and total different instrument that's being used. And you are familiar with the PEGIS evaluation method. We've been talking about that. You've been working on the superintendent PEGIS that you heard us talk about, the principal PEGIS and the teacher PEGIS. And then we call the other people PEGIS. Those are, those are all part of what Mr. Downs is going to be presenting to us at this time. So just kind of bear with us and he has a lot of information. He's worked very hard to shorten this down to a presentation. And then he's, you have a copy of that in your, in your packet there that you can take a look at. And then he'll most likely bring it back to you in May and ask you for approval on it to give you a month to look at it. So today, he's going to get us started on beginning to explain the process. Mr. Downs, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to give you a little bit of the process first. Our old CEP, it hadn't been revised since 2006. But in 2009, when Senate Bill 1 came about, this process was put into motion. And so the professional growth and effectiveness in this system, which is PEGIS, we have been working on for the last three years solid to get to where we are today. Our elementary school did a pilot two years ago testing this. This year, we're in a statewide pilot where everybody is doing a little bit of it. Everybody that was on the evaluation cycle. And so I just want to give you a little bit of where we're going. Every district in the state of Kentucky is doing the same thing I'm doing today sometime very soon. Because we have to have this thing turned around and ready to go on July 1 for the following 15, 16 school year. So the process will kind of work like this. I'm going to introduce a little bit of it to you today, talk a lot about the teacher pieces of it. There also is a principal piece, there's a superintendent piece, there's an other professional piece. But we're going to focus mostly on the teacher piece today. We'll let you look at it. It's in draft form. We are working with consultants from the state of Kentucky that will help us get this passed. Once, once we bring it back for your consideration in May, if we get an approval from the board in May, then we will send it to the Kentucky Department of Education who will review it and then give us approval or give us things we need to tweak in order to get it ready in June to be ready to go in July. So that's kind of the process of where we are. Now it's taken us three years to get this close, but we're about there. And really, the, the whole vision of this is, plan is to have every student in every school to be taught by an effective teacher. And for every school to be led by an effective principal. That's the goal. The whole system has changed around. It's, it's worked really to create a fair and equitable process for everybody. And it's all based on continual growth. Now one thing that's going to happen too is, you know, we talk a lot about our annual measurable objective, our, our score, if you will, for the district. And next year, the professional growth and effectiveness system will be part of that score. Later on, I'll show you how we score, we'll be scoring our teachers. And depending on what's your average score for all your teachers in your district, that will be converted into a number, which will go into your college and career readiness scores, your test scores, all those things. This is just another piece of.
So it all hinges back to Senate Bill 1 implementation back in 2001?
2000, yeah, in 2009 when it first came in. It all goes back to that. And I think it'll be a much better system when we get it all together. Now, just to let you know, we have a committee and it's called the 50-50 Committee. And the reason it's called that because it's half teachers and half administrators that put this document together. We had a lot of help. We got a model, I think we've had three versions of the model so far, of what the state requires. And then a local district can put in their pieces as they go to make sure it fits their, their local, local board and their local group of teachers. But that's our, that's our group right there. We've met numerous times over the last two years to come up with this document that we have now. And it, and it is not finished. We, we tweak it almost daily to get to where we're going. We tweak it almost daily to get to where we're going, but this is the group. And the other thing, even after it gets passed this summer by KDE, anytime we make any kind of major tweak to it, we bring this committee back together to make sure that we have everybody on board. The next little piece I'm going to show you is part of the assurances. And these things right here are the things that you guys are going to sign off on at the end of this. And it says that we are going to tell the Commissioner of Education that we are going to do these things. The first thing is that this was designed by that committee. That was the number one bullet. The second bullet is that in the first 30 working days of every school year, this model and plan will be gone over with every certified teacher in the district, and explain the processes each year. We will do a major job this year of going over it. Everybody's been in on pieces of it, but this will be the first time the whole thing has been put together. So, we're doing a really good job at the beginning of the school year to educate our teachers on the process. And then in the summertime, we'll do a really good job to educate our administrators, who are a lot further along down the road with this process. The next bullet talks about professional growth plan. Everybody in the district will do a professional growth plan each year, whether it's your year to be evaluated or not, you're still doing a professional growth plan. This professional growth plan comes out of areas from your self-reflection. Now, you'll hear those terms over and over and over. Self-reflection comes from the new standards that teachers are going to be judged by. And I'll show you those in a minute. But what happens is, each year, the teachers go through those standards, they reflect on where they are, whether they're developing, or accomplished, or exemplary. They kind of mark where they are. They do it, then the principal does it. They get together and talk about it. And from that talk, which produces more than you can ever know, that talk between administrator and the teacher, same thing when we go to work with principals, the talk that we have in sitting down with them with this process is a lot valuable than a one-time or two-time just drop-in observation. So, from that comes their professional growth plan, from that self-reflection. The data that they get from that, the things that they want to work on, will come from this. There's another piece that you'll hear about. It's called student voice. Once a year, we have the students of the teacher answer questions about that teacher. And then we get feedback from that. All those things go into the observation, which will be formed in summative. We'll talk about that in just a second. The next bullet talks about all administrators, including student-tenured and non-tenured teachers, will be evaluated every year. So, this is an annual thing for every teacher that's not on tenure. And we're going to stop using the word tenure, non-tenure in this process. It's called a one-year cycle, or you're on a three-year cycle. If you're not tenured, you're on a one-year cycle. That means every year, you're going to be evaluated. If you're on a three-year cycle, you're tenured, and it will be done every three years for you.
What's the type of tenure?
Excuse me? A tenure is if you've been in one school system for four consecutive years, and then you're hired to start your fifth year, then you receive a tenure. And then if you come from another district and you had tenure in that district, then you're on a one-year probationary period at your new school. If you get hired back for the next year, then your tenure comes with you. That's the way the tenure works. Once they're three years, the next thing is, each evaluator will be trained and approved in use of appropriate evaluation techniques and use of relevant instruments and procedures. Now, this is a small line, but it's a big, big deal. The principals now have to be trained, and then they have to pass a very rigorous test to be certified to do the evaluations on the teachers. It's about 40 hours worth of work that they have to put in in order to take the test. And then they have to, and actually, you're watching a lesson, and you have to score it. And when you score it, you have to meet the same scores that the original people that did it. So, it's calibrated that way. Very, very, very intensive. I want to tell you that every principal and every assistant principal in our district took that test, and it scored well, and they're all ready to go to do the evaluations. We did that a year, half ago. And then the following year after that, you have to do a calibration test to make sure you're still on. The year after that, you do another calibration test to make sure you're still scoring correctly. And then in the fourth year, you have to do it all over again. So, what we're assuring our teachers is that they're being evaluated and being observed by a trained, a highly trained administrator. So, that's a really nice piece of work. It's tough, but it's very nice. We talked about formative and summative assessment. Formative assessment is just your gathering data over the course of the year. You put all that data together at the end, and then you come up with a summative evaluation, and that's what your score is going to be based on, that summative evaluation. Each evaluator will receive a copy of that summative evaluation. It will be filed in each person's official personnel records. They also always have a right to appeal that evaluation if they need to. We don't discriminate. And then, once again, the evaluation plan will be reviewed as needed, and the major changes will be submitted to the department again. This right here is where, comes from a Danielson framework is what it is, and it's for a highly effective teacher. And these are the domains that we work with the teachers on, and when they do their self-reflection, this is where they are. The first one is planning and preparation. And then there's components or indicators down below that. The next thing is the classroom environment, the instruction, and the professional responsibilities. Those are the four areas that the teachers are going to be judged in. And then, we're not going to talk a lot now today, but the principals have the same type of framework that they are judged on. Now, the TEEScape evaluation that they all had to pass, what it does, it works on the classroom environment and the instruction. When you go into a classroom, those are the two areas you're looking at. The planning and preparation is going to be shown to the principal by evidence that the teacher will collect throughout the year. Could be their lesson plans, there's a whole long list, and in your plan, it's called other sources of evidence. They're in there, products of practice. And the professional responsibilities are, you know, when they do their reflection on teaching and those type of things, you see the observation, you see the student voice data, professional growth plan is a piece of it, self-reflection is a piece of it, and then the observations are pieces of it. And then all those things come together to come up with a score for that teacher. So, it's very comprehensive. And this is how it works at the very end. And you can see some of the lines aren't in there yet, we're still in draft. But this is the teacher's overall performance category. Right? So, what the principal will do is they'll look at their professional practice rating. That's everything we've been talking about so far, those four domains, how they scored in those four domains. You can be ineffective, you can be developing, you can be accomplished, you can be exemplary. And all those things go together. Now, here's a piece I haven't told you about, I'm saving it for here because this is part two of this. Student growth. All right? Each teacher is going to be judged on how much they grow their students. It's not just going to be based on testing at the end of the year. What each teacher's going to do is they're going to select a group of students, they're going to select an enduring skill, and that's a skill that they have to have in order to plug into the rest of the curriculum. They're going to focus on that, they're going to do pre-test, get pre-data, find out where every child is at point A. They're going to come up with a plan to move them along the line. And when they sit down with the principal and the teacher, they sit down and they develop, and it's in your plan, they develop where they want these people to be. We want 100% of the children to move. It's non-negotiable. They all got to move. Now, how many reach proficiency is something that we negotiate on. But we want to grow every student. And depending on how they grow their student, whether it's low growth, expected growth, or high growth, then they'll get a rating for that. So, you know, it's pretty comprehensive. We're looking at them as their professional practice, and then we're also looking at how they grow students. Now, if you're a teacher in fourth grade through eighth grade, and you teach math or language arts, we use your state data to come up with your local growth data to come up with your rating. So, there's a little extra piece of that. And all those things are spelled out in the plan, but I just wanted to show you this is where they come. So, for example, if I am a developing teacher, and I have high growth, right here, if I'm developing in my professional practice, but my students all grew, I went above my expected range, and I had high growth, well, then my overall rating is going to be accomplished. And each teacher will have one of these on their name at the end of the process, and then they combine all of those, and then they get turned into a score that goes into our district. That's how the process works. And if you're ineffective on your professional practice, then you can still end up being developing if you have high growth, but that's going to be pretty tough. Because you're going to have to be up the ladder on the other side in order to get developing or accomplished. Exemplary, if we're, what they explained all this to us is that exemplary is some places where you kind of visit, exemplary along the way, all teachers do. But we want all of our teachers to live and accomplished, that we want them to live. And that's kind of the whole process, and we'll next, yeah, let me, there is, I could talk to you all for a week about this process. And we've been developing it for a long time. We're trying to make it comprehensive so the teachers will understand it. But the teachers are pretty far down the line now because of the pilot, and then the pilot this year. They have all developed a professional growth plan, they've all done self-reflections, they've all worked on student growth goals this year. And so, it doesn't count this year, but they've all worked on it. And then, the other piece of this is, they haven't quite figured out how you do some of our people. For example, psychologists, speech therapists, those type of people. This doesn't quite fit them yet. And so, they've got another thing that they're working on there with, it's called other professionals. Some of this fits, some of it doesn't. And then there's some other professionals that work in the schools, like your DPP and maintenance and grounds type of things. They haven't got them. So, what we're going to do until those are getting developed, we're going to do those on our old system until the state finalizes a new system for them. So, they'll be evaluated on the old system, everybody else will be evaluated on this system. Like I said, the whole gamut, principals, assistant principals, all do a similar thing to this, just they just have different standards. So, I'm going to stop now and just see if you have any questions to this. Really, what I'm wanting you to do is kind of, now that you've got the overview, I'd like for you, over the next month, kind of look through it if you can, and if you see any things that you have a question about, or you think we need to tweak, I'd be glad to do that. If you want to, just give me a call, I can run it by the committee. And then, what I'd like to do in May is bring this back to you all for your approval, to be sent to KDE for their approval. And that's kind of the process. It's a big change for us, but I do think it's going to be very worthwhile and effective.
Besides the obvious result of getting our, all the students in every grade the best possible teacher. What is this? If I'm ineffective, or whatever, is this a way to weed out ineffective teachers, basically?
This is not, no, this is not going to be a process to try to eliminate jobs, or fire people, or those kind of things. This is a continual improvement process. Let's say, for example, you were a tenured teacher, and somehow you landed down into ineffective. You'll see a chart in part of this, and it shows if you end up ineffective and you're a tenured person, well, then you turn into a one-year cycle person. We're going to work on you each year. We're not going to wait three more years just because you're tenured to do evaluation and observations on you. We're going to plug in help right then. So, the real purpose of this whole process is to make you a better teacher, make you a more effective teacher for our children, and to keep trying to move you forward. I don't care if you're the best teacher that we have, this system will make you keep climbing because you've still got to grow students to score exemplary. So, that's the way we look at it. We don't look at it as a way to try to get rid of people. We look at it as a way to try to grow people. And the best thing to do with that is, is in the hiring process, you hire the very best you can find. And we have been really lucky at that, and we stress that to our principals, and plus to the generosity of the board, our pay scales, and those kind of things, help us attract the best. And that's what we want to do.
Will there be some, if an ineffective teacher, will they have some kind of intervention?
Exactly. We have a growth plan for that teacher. Depending on where they're weak at, and that'll be identified through the operation process, through the collecting of all that data. When we find out where they're weak, then we're going to start plugging in interventions. Whether it be, there's a lot of things that the state has put together, like it's called Professional Development 360. It's online. I mean, there's tons of areas that you can plug them into to help them grow, if we need to send them somewhere to help them grow. The principal's going to be in tune with that person, working on their growth plan. There's going to be a lot of help that we're going to plug in. We're going to keep helping them until we can't help.
You've got a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
This was mandated by the KDE?
Yes, sir.
Is it based on the national program, or is it just something that Kentucky came up with?
Well, I think it's a piece of the waiver. If you're going to have high states accountability, you also got to have the most highly effective teachers and leaders to go along with it. So, I think part of the waiver was that we are going to have a system in place that develops highly effective teachers, develops highly effective leaders, and we just didn't have it with the old system.
This is a Danielson framework.
Right.
But is PEGES unique to Kentucky?
No, I don't think so, so it's called. I think it's being developed in a lot of places, especially in the states that have waivers.
So, I guess part of that question would turn to, let's say, Ohio has the same stuff, and now we hire a teacher from Ohio, are we going to be privy to their, the results that they had as a teacher, and their effectiveness, and so on and so forth from other school systems?
Well, typically, the way it works is that would be, from a firm standpoint, that would be protected until that teacher provided that to us.
So, just to continue on here, due to higher ratings, let's say you have, you know, somebody who lives in accomplished but has a lot of exemplaries year over year, or they're tenured every three years or whatever, is that in some way going to be remunerated in a higher wage, or is money?
Yeah, they've never gone there, that's the merit paid type of argument, and that has never been, never even crossed the plate in the three or four years we've been working on this.
And that would be a legislative decision, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, if we had, you know, if we had some folks here that were that good, that exemplary, then, you know, the school system, X, Y, Z over there is going to say, ah, you hear about so-and-so, they're a tremendous teacher, and they may try to lure them away. I mean, is there something, are you getting it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And then lastly, is there, will the public, the general public, the moms and pops, will they be aware of any of this infrastructure? In other words, they'll know that teacher A is really doing great, and teacher B is not so much.
Well, these things are private to the teacher, and of course, it goes in their private file, and so that really wouldn't be privy to that information. What our goal is, is that they're all.
Yeah.
Well, but on our report card, there could be a possibility that on our school report card, that information could be included as a group.
As a group, as a group, not as individuals.
That's a good question, too.
Yeah, it will be included in our group, probably broken down by school, and then overall district school. So, yes, that will be included. Which will put another layer of, you know, we have to do a really good job of this. So, I apologize to you that I only scratched the surface, but there's a.
There's a lot of stuff.
There's an awful lot in there. I think this, our plan is 45 pages, and it's been whittled down. I have probably 20 of these that we've whittled and worked on. And I'll be glad, if you come up with some other questions for the next round, to answer those, and hopefully, we can get there. But I think it's going to be a very good process, and the 50 Committee will. But I think it's going to be a very good process, and the 50 committee was very easy to work with, that I think the teachers see the value in this, and especially since the principals are having to put so much work into being able to give an accurate score, I think they feel really good about it. And I also think they feel good that it's not going to be something that we're trying to catch them with and get them with. I think it's a continual process of improvement.
Did you say the middle school has already gone through this?
The elementary did a pilot two years ago, this year all schools are doing it, all teachers.
Any early results or?
Well, they're just getting used to the processes right now. We're going down the home stretch to get to our summative rating, we haven't done that yet, it'll be getting done this month. But the principals have reported, a lot of really good conversations have come from this work that otherwise never happened before. And one of the things too, that I just wondered, the old system, you went and observed the teacher, and you watched everything that the teacher did. In this model, you watch what the students are doing, which is a reflection of what the teacher wants. So as an observer, I'm really watching what the students are doing to gather the information about the teacher. So that's a real shift. Because that's what it's all about. What we really want is student results.
Does this parallel the Concorde as far as how the effectiveness, how they implement those?
Well, an effective teacher will make sure that they're following all their standards, and they do that, the curriculum comes with it. You know, this Danielson model will work with any curriculum that you bring down the pipe, it's just a vehicle to get to. So it doesn't matter which curriculum you're using, a highly effective teacher is going to be highly effective whether they're, no matter what curriculum they're using. Okay?
I like the part about, you know, that all the teachers are continually evaluating themselves, even though tenured teachers don't have the summative assessment, but every three years, but every year.
Yeah, every teacher, every year, will do the self-reflection and the professional growth plan, the student voice, so they're all engaged in the process every year.
Yeah, I like the point where the evaluators, that's going to be nine tenths of this program, isn't it, evaluation? The evaluators are being tested every year, and then every third year they have to go through the whole re-
They are highly, I can attest to, they are highly qualified to do this. Like I said, it was about 40 hours worth of work just to be able to take the test. And all our administrators passed it, which is not easy to do. So we have a very good group to go into this process with. And I can tell you, that's not the case in every district, that they all pass on the first round. And when you read through it, you'll find, if we have people that have trouble with it, that we have procedures in place to make sure that we plug in help for them too.
I think it's only right, if superintendents are being evaluated on everything from what they eat, when they eat it, come to school while they do, I think it's only correct that the principals and the teachers be evaluated. It all comes down, like you said, to, for the students raising their level of accomplishment, bottom line.
It is, student growth is the main thing, and we owe it to them to have highly effective teachers, leaders, all the way up. That's why we're here.
They're not going to do this for the board members, are they?
You might be next. Well, they aren't raised, Mark, but you go on your train.
Downs, thank you for a very thorough job.
Thank you.
Very difficult, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval for fiscal year 2016 payday schedule.
Yeah, this is just one of those things that we do this time of year for the coming year. The payroll on the day of the month that it comes out will be the last day, last business day of each month, with the exception of November. Take a look at that, we simply just need your approval for that process. Another motion approved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is the approval of the summer nutrition application request. I'm sorry, I skipped the approval of our Barstown High School 2015 graduation date.
And we have held off for obvious reasons, bringing this to you, we think we're safe, and we're going to present this to you today and ask you to approve the graduation date of June 6 at 11:00 a.m. at the Garret's Martin Field, unless the event of inclement weather, which will be moved inside to the gym.
Approval of the bed, June 6.
This is a recommendation that the-
I saw it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 That's the same day we're having our 50th graduation celebration.
Anniversary.
How do you know about that?
God bless.
She graduated about age 12.
Pretty close. Do you want to walk through the line again? I'm wearing a hat this year, I don't, but you can move right along.
Then our next, now we're ready for our summer nutrition application.
Yes, our summer nutrition application, also known as the summer feeding program for our students in our community. I think you're pretty familiar with this, but just a reminder of a few things, we provide free meals for all children under the age of 18. We begin on June 8 through July the 24th. We serve breakfast from 8 to 9, and lunches from 11 to 12:30. We will be teaming up with the Nelson County School System this year, they do have locations throughout the county as well, and we're going to be advertising in our local newspaper, any place of businesses, doctors' offices, and things like that, where we'll be able to reach our community folks. We feed students that are involved in summer camps, daycares, things of that nature. This is a federal program, fully reimbursable, but we do have guidelines that we do need to follow. Adults are welcome to eat as well, but there is a $3 charge for adult meal, and these are hot meals. I think it's a great service to the Nelson County community. Excited to be teaming up with the Nelson County School System and sharing this information together throughout the entire county. So with that being said, if you don't have any questions, we would sure appreciate your approval of that. Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Yes, I'll say it.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Aye, seven. Next is approval of our community education.
You will recognize this as adult education, a Barstown Adult Education Program. We do have a new name since Senate Bill 1 came in in 2009, and there are guidelines now that we did not have before that time, that say they will provide a grant for the coordinator of this program. And the way it works is that that person, we will receive 50% payment, it will be made upon approval of the contract, and the balance will be paid in the fourth quarter of 2016. So this is for the next school year is what we're looking at. There are certain assurances that you're agreeing to. I want to assure you that we are in line with those assurances that you see in the back of this contract. And I'll give you an example. For example, if the coordinator works less than 220 days, then you are putting yourself in danger of losing your funding. So our coordinator is scheduled for 40 days, does an excellent job with adult education from year to year, and we're very excited to work as she does. So I can tell you that everything is in good order here. We do ask for your approval of this contract with the state for our adult education coordinator's position.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is the approval of the Community Care Contractual Services Agreement.
Another contract we're bringing to you due to the timing of getting it approved. This is one of those things that come around this time of year. We have been a partner with Community Care for many years, and they are an excellent partner. They provide a great service to schools in this particular area. You may have heard of Seven Counties or Bluegrass area, we are at Community Care, is what we go by, and it covers this region. They do provide great service to our middle school and high school, probably serving anywhere from about 70 to 80 students at each of those schools. We actually could use more help from them, and they are working with us in order to provide more help. It's just those things are very difficult at this time to get folks to be able to serve in those positions. So they are working to help us, but what this does, it continues our relationship with them, and as I said, it's a much-needed service that they provide to us, and would ask that you consider approval for this document.
Is there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Yeah, motion and a second. Are there any questions about the Community Care contract? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item, we have some travel authorization.
I'd like to, if it's a pleasure of the board, I'd like to present both of these and ask you to approve them together, unless you have any concerns with them. But everything is in good order. The first is a overnight trip for future business leaders at the state level, they will be traveling there. We do have a number of chaperones, both male and female, everything seems to be in good order on this request. And the second is an overnight trip with the speech team, and they will be traveling out of state, I believe, yes, Fort Lauderdale, they'll be spending some time there in that competition. They do also have the number of chaperones that are needed, it looks like we have two male students and a male chaperone. So everything seems to be in good order. If you don't have any questions, I would, it's your pleasure to approve both of these together.
Do we need a school board member supervising it?
What do you think about him, Chair?
No, I don't think so.
Let the man show Mr. Ruck's request.
I think most approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is personnel.
I'm going to make you aware of a few things there, if you'll see on your resignation page, we do have, this time of year, we do have about six or eight folks there that have resigned. We do have a couple of other items there, take note of those, and we'll make you aware of that information. And then we do have a retirement, we have three retirees, Margaret Smith, who's been a cafeteria worker for us for over 10 years in cafeteria, is a very loyal employee. Certainly will miss her. And also Miss Anne Heiser, Barstown primary teacher, has been there right at 35 years, been teaching there, and is kind of an institution in our elementary and primary over the years, so she too will be missed. And then, we have also Dr. Patrick Hagan will be making his retirement official after almost 40 years. And we're certainly glad that he has been with us and the work that he has done. One of the stories I always remember about Dr. Hagan, he tells at the teacher orientation, he says, as a young buck right out of college, he came here to Barstown, grew up in this area, but came to Barstown thinking he was going to blow through this place and go to someplace bigger and better. His famous line is, he said, "I always found bigger, but I never found better." And so, Dr. Hagan, we certainly appreciate all of your work and everything that you've done here. I hope that you're able to enjoy some more time with your family, especially those grandkids, and we wish you the very best. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is kind of a sad note.
Yeah.
We don't have to approve it. Tell you how long I've lived here, I've known half of the certain tenants I bought out of. And all this whole wall of board members. It's a lot.
Yeah.
But you finally got it down now.
Next is approval of the leave of absence request.
We're just asking you, essentially we have an employee here that's asked for a leave of absence, and we're asking you to continue that. Mr. Downs, is there anything unusual on this request that we need to know about? Thank you. So it is in all the processes to extend this leave of absence, is what the motion approves.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Aye, seven. And you'll look, you will have the site-based decision-making council minutes from the schools. And now we're ready to move into executive session, we'll need a motion for that.
Would you read it to the record for the reason why we're going in, please?
Oh, yes, I will. We're going into executive session for personnel matters per KRS 61810, Section 1F. It takes your lot.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Folks, we'll be in executive session for a while, and when we come out, we'll come back into open session.